Good evening, and welcome to the April 26th Regular City Commission Meeting. This evening will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by short meditation. Also this evening, the Boy Scouts from Troop Three, Ethan and Michael Titus, will be leading us in the pledge. Boys want to come up?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, our Mayor Pro Tim has a proclamation she's going to be reading.
Good evening. Our first proclamation, National Travel and Tourism Week. Do you have them come up? Kristine, you want to come up?
Whereas travel matters deeply to the economic prosperity of Kansas as well as to business wealth and the comfort and pleasure of individual travelers; whereas tourism is responsible for creating 3.2 percent of the total Kansas gross state product and is the third-largest industry in the state based on employment; and whereas travelers spending $6.7 billion in the state of Kansas generated an economic impact of $9.85 billion in 2014 as traveler dollars flowed through the Kansas economy; and whereas every citizen benefits from travel and tourism, the travel industry substantially enhances our personal growth and education while promoting intercultural understanding and appreciation of Leavenworth's history, geography, and culture; and whereas travel is among Kansas' largest private sector employees supporting tourism industry; whereas traveler spending generated $570 million of all Kansas state and local tax revenues resulting in a tourism tax contribution on average of $511 per Kansas household; and whereas the city of Leavenworth realized more than $2.6 million from overnight visitor expenditures in 2015, validating the unique significance of the American travel industry in the lives of the citizens of Leavenworth, Kansas. Now therefore, I, Mayor Larry Dedeky, City of Leavenworth, do recognize the week of May 1 through 7, 2016, as National Travel and Tourism Week.
Would you like to say something?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you so much for this proclamation. It really does state how important tourism is to our economy here in Leavenworth and across the country, and to celebrate it nationwide, May 1 through the 7th, I think, is really important, and a lot of money flows through our community and nationwide during National Tourism Week and throughout the year. So, thank you for this.
The second one, National Drinking Water Week, May 1 to 7. We have Joel Mankin with the Leavenworth Water Department. Did I pronounce that wrong?
Yes, whatever.
Sorry. Mankin. Joel Mankin, thank you. Whereas water is our most valuable, important natural resource, playing a vital role in our daily lives; and whereas a safe, reliable water supply is critical to the success of our community, it creates jobs, attracts industry and investment, and provides for the health and welfare of citizens in ways ranging from disease prevention to fire suppression and the quality of life we enjoy; and whereas we often take water supply for granted until it is threatened, either by drought, water main breaks, or some other event, any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some ways related to access to safe water; and whereas we are all stewards of the water supply and infrastructure upon which future generations depend; and whereas each citizen of the city of Leavenworth is called upon to help protect our source water from pollution, to practice responsible water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues; and whereas the water produced by the Leavenworth Water Department is the most reliable and best tasting water in all of Leavenworth County, now therefore, I, Larry Dedeky, Mayor, City of Leavenworth, do hereby proclaim May 1 through 7, 2016, as Leavenworth Drinking Water Week. Would you like to say anything?
Just on behalf of the Water Works Board and the staff that works continuously to do this for you, we appreciate your kindness. Thank you very much.
Finally, is Wendy here? Wendy's here. Small Business Week. And we have Wendy Scheit with Leavenworth Main Street. Whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risk, and work hard; and whereas from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise; and whereas small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy and a passion for what they do; and whereas when we support small businesses, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture; and whereas because this country's 28 million small businesses create nearly two out of every three jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs; and whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to all entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies; and whereas the city of Leavenworth, Kansas, supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, grow their business, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. And now therefore, I, Larry Dedeky, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, do recognize the week of May 1 through 7, 2016, National Small Business Week. Thank you. You might say if you want? Sure.
Well, we're fortunate to have over 240 small businesses just in the downtown area of the first city of Kansas, so that's pretty amazing. They're amazing to me, all the things they accomplish. Can I give a plug for our couple of events next week?
Sure.
Many of them are participating in our first Thursday Alive After Five events, and I'll leave some flyers, but it's Feliz Cinco de Mayo, so that is the theme. Each month it's themed. There are 20 businesses participating. There's a ticket cost, and that cost goes to market downtown Leavenworth. So, we accumulate that and do quite a bit of marketing with that. But those are 20 businesses that you'll go in and have some pretty fabulous drink and appetizers food, and so after you visit 10, or 12, or all 20, you'll have a full tummy. It's from 5:00 to 8:00 on May 5. And we also, the Leavenworth City Market kicks off May through October, and that starts this Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Haymarket Square. We have a number of vendors this year, many coming back, many new ones, and it's always a fun time just to go out and mix and mingle with the crowd, and may not need anything, but oftentimes you find something you can't live without. And also on May 7th is our Build a Bouquet. If you'll take a look at our Facebook page sometime, it is a fabulous bouquet. There are 15 merchants participating, and they purchase a mason jar at the Main Street office for $5 and their map, and they go around to the participating businesses and collect a different flower and a piece of greenery, and it's just an amazing huge bouquet. There's a picture of it on our Facebook. So, that's a great thing to give to mom, auntie, some other special person, and that's the day before Mother's Day. So, that's always a popular event, open to the first 100 participants. Any questions about small business?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next order of business is whole business consideration of previous minute meetings. Any additions or corrections? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of April 12, 2016.
Second. You have a motion, a second. Begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Passes 5 to 0. Under new business and citizen participation, this is where if you have a petition, or if you want to speak about anything that's not on the agenda, you can approach the podium. Pat, I think you had something. Was that correct?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, if I might take a minute to announce a new program that the public safety sector is instituting known as Operation Red File. You may have read a little bit about this. Operation Red File is a collaborative effort between the public safety sector, the Leavenworth Police Department, and the Fire Department, Leavenworth County Public Safety, EMS, and the Sheriff's Department, as well as the Council on Aging. Operation Red File, this is exactly what one looks like, contains a series of documents. This program is designed to enhance our service level to the elderly population when public safety has to come to their house for some medical emergency. I'll use my mother as an example. Several years ago, when she was alive, she was probably taking somewhere between eight and 10 medications, and my mother would tell me that she had to take the orange ones in the morning and the green ones at night, and that's helped her remember. But when we come out to provide medical services, that's not as helpful as it can be. So, the idea is, in advance of us having to come out and provide services, the members of the Council on Aging volunteers, the Police Department, the Fire Department, will help them fill it out in advance, the specific kinds of medications that you're taking for and what it's for. That way, when we're there at the house, or we're there with someone that's by themselves, we can provide an enhanced level of service to them that we can't currently do. In addition, there are other things like next of kin. It's very often overwhelming when there's a lot of police and fire at your house, and you're elderly, and you're having medical issues. You know, it's hard for them to sort through all that and remember. So, this file, the idea is to fill it out in advance of that. There's a lot of information in the file that can help us provide better services to them. And on Friday, April 29th, at 9:00 in the morning, there will be an official kickoff event at the Council on Aging, which is at 1830 South Broadway Street in Leavenworth. Myself, Chief Birch will be present, Sheriff Dedeky, several representatives from the local Council on Aging, and the State Council on Aging will be present, and that will be the kickoff in which we are hoping to help our elderly population fill these documents out, and then we'll do that event, and then in May, there's a huge picnic that they have annually. At some point soon, probably earliest next week, people can pick these up at the Police Department or their Fire Department. We bought, collectively all of us, we bought a total of 2,000 of them to start with, and then we'll see how the program goes.
What time did you say on Friday?
9:00 a.m.
9:00, okay. At Council on Aging.
At the Council on Aging, and you certainly are all invited.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else that desires to speak? If not, I'll close that portion of the agenda. We'll move on to public hearings. Public hearing for the tax increment financing project plan, North Gateway Second Hotel. Paul?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'm here tonight to present to you-
Can we open the public hearing first?
Open the public hearing.
You need to do the public first, okay. Need a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Public hearing is open.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'm here tonight to present to you the second hotel project plan for the area at Fourth and Metro. The plan is the framework of the development agreement that will come to the City Commission on May 10th, and I'm going to outline a little bit about what the plan entails. The plan entails a Marriott Town Place Suites Hotel with a minimum of 86 rooms, scheduled to be opened December 2020. That date is tentative. It'll depend on a lot of other issues.
2020?
2020. That's just what we have here. My guess is earlier than that, based on preliminary at this point. The total estimated cost of the second hotel project is estimated preliminarily right now at $8.8 million. As it's outlined in this plan, the developer of the property will be Ferguson Properties. They will acquire the land, demolish existing housing, provide uniform site and underground attention on the site. To let you know where the site is, the site is between Fourth Street and Fifth Street, between Pawnee north to the alley. That's the area between the school and the existing hotel. That's the land. The developer and the city propose that the redevelopment project be reimbursed by the city, the city's incentive, to not exceed $850,000. That will be financed by Geo Tiff Bonds, that is proceeds from the tax increment that we currently receive from the first hotel in that area. And how it's broken down is 141,666 will be distributed to the developer upon closing of the properties in the area. The amount of $283,332 will be distributed upon completion of the demolition of existing structures and removal of the debris to rough grading, with the exception of one property at 416 Pawnee Street. Finally, the city will withhold the final half of the incentive, $425,000, until the start of vertical construction or until we consider that as foundations have been poured on the property. The total tax incentive from the city is capped at $850,000. Again, there was a feasibility study done on the proceeds available to pay off these Tiff Bonds. It's estimated over the life of the Tiff District that there will be more than $5.6 million available, so this fits well within the amount of money created simply in that district. No city general operating dollars will be generated within that district, which is the point of creating a Tiff District. The staff is currently finalizing a development agreement that will come back to the City Commission barring any issues back and forth. We don't expect any, but that will come to the Commission on May 10th, and we will continue to move through the process. Along with that incentive, the development agreement will include a CID or Community Improvement District, which allows initial taxing authority from the developer. This site contains many difficulties dealing with drainage, topography, utility relocation, so with the extraordinary site development costs, staff will be recommending the Commission to approve a CID, but that will come before the Commission. That is the outline of the development agreement or the project plan as we have it right now. If you have any questions, or if the public has any questions, we will do our best to answer those.
Does there any Commissioners have any questions, Paul?
No.
At this time, I'll accept a public comment for those that oppose this project. Saying none for those that support this project. Saying none. Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Passes 5 to 0. Public hearing is closed. Next is the first consideration ordinance for the North Gateway Second Hotel. This is a consensus. Is there a consensus?
Yes.
Yes, there's five. Item number four is consider reduction in the nuisance and demolition fees for 426 Pawnee.
The city received a request to reduce some of the administrative fees that were associated with nuisance and demolition on the property located at 426 Pawnee. The request came to us from Mike Riley. He's here this evening to answer any questions you might have also. But just some of the background, in 2011, the city demolished a detached garage located on the property, and since that time, the city has been mowing and performing various lot cleanups at that property. Over those years, we've assessed the taxes. The spreadsheet attached shows all the times that we've gone and mowed or cleaned up the property, the administrative fees that were associated with it, and then the total fees. Just as a overview, the total cost incurred by the city, $5,249. Of that, then there were administrative fees of $10,600, for total fees assessed on the property currently of $15,849. So, the request was to ask the Commission to consider reducing some of these administrative fees. In the past, what has been considered is to keep the actual costs that have been incurred by the city, and then just add on administrative fees, like for each year, $100 each. So, that's the proposal I have here in front of you, which would reduce it down to $5,749. So, that would reduce $10,100 of administrative fees that are currently assessed to the property. And if you have any other questions, or if this is-
I would like to add.
Yes. I'm sorry, I was just going to tell-
This property is part of the hotel, the second hotel project plan area.
Who's the owner of the property now?
Yeah, it's Mr. Hildebrandt. I don't remember the first name.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, Mr. William Hildebrandt is the owner of the property. He is in a nursing facility in the community here, does not live in the property, the owner. On top of those fees, I would just add, there is roughly a total of about $14,000 to $15,000 in back taxes that will be paid as a result of the sale that will occur mid-June of this year.
So, the person who owns this now, this is going to be transferred to ownership to Ferguson Properties, who's converting the hotel, and so it's coming to new ownership, which is why you're asking for this waiver?
Yes, asking for the waiver simply so that Mr. Hildebrandt can achieve the sale without having to come out of pocket with a check and closing.
And during this time, has he been in the nursing home and not living from, I mean, these fees go back to 2012?
My best guess, Commissioner, is that he's been in a nursing home for probably three to four years, yes.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider the reduction in the nuisance and demolition fees for 426 Potawatomi.
A second. Pawnee?
Pawnee, yeah. I said Potawatomi, I'm sorry.
Motion and a second. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 That passes 5 to 0. 2016 cereal malt beverage license for Main Street.
This is a request to approve the 2016 cereal malt beverage license for Leavenworth Main Street. This would cover all of the events that Main Street has at Haymarket Square during the course of the year. The application has been approved by the Police Department and the Sanitation Department, and the next step is just to ask the Commission to approve this, this is an on-premise cereal malt beverage license.
Thank you. Any questions? If there's no questions, there are motions.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve 2016 cereal malt beverage license for Main Street for events in Elwood Haymarket Square in 2016.
A second. Motion and a second. Begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Passes 5 to 0. Under resolutions, Resolution B 2135, Community Development Advisory Board Annual Action Plan.
We have Mary Dwyer, our Community Development Block Grant Coordinator.
Hi, Mary.
Hi there, how are you doing?
We're doing good.
Good, I'm glad. I'm here to present the Community Development Advisory Board recommendation for the annual action plan for 2016-17. It informs how we're going to spend our money from the Community Development Block Grant. We've had three meetings, public meetings, and the Advisory Board has suggested that we move it forward, so I'm bringing it to you.
Any questions of Mary, by the Commission? Thank you very much, Mary.
All right.
Need a motion?
I move that we adopt the attached resolution, adopting and authorizing the submission of the 2016-2017 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan.
Seconded it?
You have a motion and a second. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Passes 5 to 0. Under bids and contracts, bid for Park Department mowing contract.
Be grantor Parks and Recreation Director.
Evening, Steve.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This is the mow contract administered by the Parks Department. Two weeks ago today, we were contacted by the low bidder who had been awarded that contract, that he's going to be unable to fulfill that for the season, citing personnel reasons. So, that same evening at the April 12th Regular Commission meeting, I brought that forward to you and unanimously voted to go ahead and void the remainder of that contract, and then we immediately went to work, going back to the bids from the original bid tab from that. So, in doing that, the second low bid was from Ground FX, which was found to not qualify. The next low bid was Kansas Land Management, which did qualify. We contacted Kansas Land Management, and they had already had too much work on their plate, which we feared might be the case with some of these, and they were unable to take on the work. So, that led us to Superior Lawn Care. They were able to take on the bid. As a result of that, though, obviously, the bid price is quite a bit higher, so we've had to take on, we being the Park Maintenance Department, have taken on three areas to mow in-house as well, and we had written the contract as such where we could make adjustments like that if need be to make it fit our budget. As well, we've also had to reduce the number of mow cycles that we'll be able to do this year, so that will be managed very strictly throughout the season, which we do anyhow based on rainfall and more specifically the lack thereof when we do skip. But since we're going to have a reduced number of mow cycles this year, then we'll even look at that even closer, where we're going to have to space it out a little bit more. So, with that, the contract would be for 19 mow cycles, and removing the three mow areas it brings each mow cycle to a total of $1,935. So, $1,935 times the 19 mow cycles will be $36,765, and that's what the total will be for the contract for the entire year. In the operational line item and park maintenance budget, there's just under $37,000 remaining for that contract, so we will be able to sustain that. Like I said, though, we will be taking on some more mowing and some mares. We're recommending that bid for Superior Lawn Care. Any questions?
Thanks, Steve. Any questions by the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Superior Lawn Care for the bid contract in the amount of $1,935 per mow and not to exceed $36,765.
Seconded.
Motion and a second. Begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 That passes 5 to 0. Item number eight is collaboration agreement for the assessment of fair housing.
Mary Dwyer will be back later for this.
Get me twice this time. As part of the Community Development Block Grant, we're required by the Housing and Urban Development to do an assessment of fair housing. They've changed the name of the document. It's now called an Assessment of Fair Housing instead of an Analysis of Impediments. That makes more sense. And they strongly encouraged us to do this as a collaborative with the KC Metro area because one of the components of it is to assess regionally how fair housing works since it kind of migrates from place to place. So, we would like to suggest that we work with the collaborative effort that's being put together by Kansas City, Missouri. They'll be the lead agency, and all the other cities, Lee Summit, ourselves, and others, Kansas City, Kansas, will work with them to produce this document.
Do you know what their long-term goal is for this?
It's, they had this as a goal since 1969. It's, they had this as a goal since 1969, but each year, they have us produce a five-year view of how we see the fair housing. So it's trying to take a picture of the community and how we might be able to address it.
Is there any questions, Mary? If not, is there a motion?
I move we approve the participation in the regional assessment of fair housing and signature of the collaboration agreement, not to exceed $7,500, which will be paid out of current Community Development Block Grant funds.
Second.
Motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Reluctantly, yes.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Item number 10, Contract 2016-24 Supplemental Agreement with Lionel Weaver Construction.
Miss one.
Did I?
Number 10.
Okay, I did. Number nine. Sorry about that. Agreement between Kansas State Historical Preservation Office and the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an agreement between, as you said, the City of Leavenworth and the State Historic Preservation Office. This is a five-year agreement that we've been in, we've had in place with the state since the year 2000. And what this agreement does is basically allows the city to perform required statutory reviews of projects within historic districts or on historic structures. Since the City of Leavenworth is a certified local government, that means we have an established Historic Preservation Ordinance and Historic Preservation Board. That's what allows us to perform those reviews. Instead of forwarding them onto the state, it just keeps everything in-house and gives us a little bit more control. So this is just a five-year renewal of that agreement, and I can answer any questions in my head.
Any questions by Commissioners? Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agreement between Kansas State Historic Preservation Office and the City of Leavenworth for the performance of project reviews.
Second. Motion and a second. Begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. Thank you. Now, number 10. Contract 2016-24 Supplemental Agreement Number One with Lionel Weaver Construction.
Mike McDonald. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commission, this item and the next couple items, I couldn't be here without my hard-working staff, many of whom are in the audience here this evening, so they're in a position to answer questions that I might not be able to answer, but I'll do my best. This is a change to the current contract that we're titling as supplemental agreement. This is with Lionel Weaver Construction as part of the 2015 sanitary sewer repair and rehabilitation contract. This is additional work that is kind of the normal work that we would have a contract for. However, the timing was such that we felt it prudent to try to find a mechanism that we could have this work constructed now rather than later this year as part of the 2016 program. So we're asking for what would normally be considered a changeover, but it's entirely a voluntary choice on our part to bring this to you. It's not a problem with plans or specifications or contractor performance. The project that Lionel Weaver Construction will be starting probably next week was awarded by the City Commission on March 22 for $500,000. This is a request to add to that work another $149,480. Basically, there's additional manholes, some additional pipelining, some other repairs and repairing of some service connections from inside the pipes. If you have questions on this, I'll do my best to answer them. The funds for this will exhaust our 2015 funds, but there is money budgeted 2016, which has the net impact of reducing somewhat the 2016 program when we get ready to put it out.
Any questions, Mr. McDonald?
No.
Saying none, is there a motion?
I move we approve the supplemental agreement number one with Lionel Weaver Construction in an amount not to exceed $149,480 for a contract total not to exceed $649,513.
Second.
Motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Price.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Item number 11, Cooperative Purchasing Agreement for Granite Seal.
Yes, sir. This is a, moving forward on the 2016 pavement management program, this is considerably larger funds available this year than we've had in the recent past. And working with the Public Works staff, we've identified against all expectations that it would be worthy to do a chip seal program this year. Based on previous chip seals, I was extremely reluctant to move forward with this, but changes in some of the material that's used as the chips by going to a granite chip, the way that the emotions applied and some stricter sweeping specification, installation specifications. My staff has convinced me to bring to you a recommendation for a granite seal portion, which would basically replaces the slurry seal portion of work that we would do each year. It is, we believe, a better product in the end, and we recommend that the City Commission approve this. It's interesting to note that the low bidder, or the bidder, or the proposed contractor was obtained through a cooperative purchasing effort where several cities in the greater Johnson County area often, when they bid up their Public Works projects, they allow other municipalities to essentially have access to the same pricing structure by the contractor if the contractor's willing, and they say, in our case, the city was willing to do that. In order to expedite that, this project to basically lock in this price so we can move ahead with the rest of the program, we're proposing to use the bids received from, by the City of Lenexa from Harbor Construction and to approve the use of the cooperative purchasing agreement as reflected in the proposal received. This is a different way than we've done business in the past. I think we've bought, you know, like fire trucks or something through similar things in the past, but this is really the first large-scale project like this we've done with one of these agreements. It's been discussed with the city manager and the finance director, and we believe it's certainly a worthy, if nothing else, experiment. If it goes well, we may be doing more of these, but it's a case-by-case basis. The rest of the 2016 pavement management plan, I believe, is scheduled to open bids on May 18. And the top of page 78 indicates the general magnitude of the work is work on 20th Street and the general kind of city milling overlay portion of the work, mostly milling overlay, some simply overlaying. And then in addition, there's a component for design and inspection and pavement evaluation to show how the funds will be expended that were budgeted for this year. I've listed the streets below that would be part of this granite seal program. This type of work is in and out very quickly. If the weather's good, this is typically about three days worth of work. It may be five if something happens. But we look forward to trying something a little different this year and see if it makes a better program for everyone.
So this is, putting this down is similar to putting the slurry down, your usual?
Yeah.
Well, it's a different composite?
Yeah, there's a different process somewhat, it's a different oil, but the nice thing with the slurry is you don't have the dust, you don't have the flying rocks, you don't have so much the track tar onto the vehicles, which if you recall some of the disastrous things that we had a number of years ago, I think even something like there was so much dust on Eisenhower Road that they had to shut down the Hallmark plant because their dust system couldn't keep up with them. And that still gets talked about today by those involved. This is not that. We did do reference checking. Tammy Snyder, our project manager, she called a number of the communities that have used this, both in Leavenworth County and in Johnson County, and they were all spoke very favorable of it, very little upsetness, if you will, from the citizens. And based off those references is the reason I'm here recommending it to you today, because otherwise I wouldn't.
Will our streets sparkle?
Yes.
You're gonna get out there and hold you that I'm keeping this list. Check that out. But I have one question, too, because we're partnering with Lenexa. How does that maybe affect the pricing with this? Do you think it's beneficial for us?
I think it's beneficial. We get the same unit price for chip seal and preparation and sweeping that they did, but because we're not Lenexa and they have to drive further and things, we had to negotiate a proposed move-in and I think traffic control budget. If you look on page 79, you'll see the proposal from Harbor Construction. The chip seal, the sweeping, the sweeping, and the kind of the patching that they do, those are all Lenexa numbers. And then we believe that the numbers that they proposed that we've examined for mobilization and traffic control are within reason. We see them on similar numbers on similar projects. So that, they don't have a number in their proposal in Lenexa for mobilization to Leavenworth. So those are additions to that. But the actual work itself is the same price that they received in a bidding environment, which met our criteria for public, or participation for public funds.
And under traffic control, set like a lot of their personnel cost and things under there?
That's probably some personnel, but a lot of contracted barricades, and they have to have people come in early and set things up and stuff. So it's labor and materials for traffic control. They were typically, they were gonna rent these barricades, and if they don't rent them, they own them, but they only last a few seasons, they gotta make more. We believe that those numbers were similar to other sized projects we see for move-in and traffic control numbers. It's a fairly goodly number of streets, they're scattered all over, and they gotta have a lot of barricades because they move very, very quickly with this.
Any other questions?
If you, anybody that ever goes to the movies over at Berry Woods, that, I don't know if it's an AMC, who knows what it is now, the big theater over there, they have the granite in their sidewalks when you walk up there at night and evening. It really, you know, looks like a Hollywood Walk of Stars or something like that. But you can see the granite in there, and I'm sure it wears better, too.
Yeah, that's the main thing, if it wears better, I'm all for it.
Yeah, one of the problems we ran into with the slurry seals is that it tend to start peeling off after two or three years through a couple winters and general wear and tear. This tends to last a lot longer.
Good.
Leavenworth County, they chip seal on top of chip seal on top of chip seal on a regular basis. It's been a very effective tool for them. We'll see how this works for us. I'm not sure we'll end up there, but I know years and years ago, 25, 30 years ago, or actually 30, 35 years ago, Leavenworth did a lot of their own chip sealing with the old style stuff. Been a while, we'll see how this goes.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. If there's no additional questions, is there a motion?
I move that we approve Harbor Construction for the granite seal portion of the 2016 pavement management program for an amount not to exceed $200,000.
Second.
Motion and a second. Begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. Number 12, bids for the 2016 sidewalk improvement project.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commission, this is another project that we're excited to see moving forward. This will construct some new sidewalks, a lot of repair and rehabilitation of existing sidewalks on 4th Street, 10th Street, 20th Street, and a few other places. This is work that was reviewed with the commission late last year that we've put together into a set of plans, was advertised locally and had a lot of participation from contractors, and we're pleased to see that Cos Construction from Leavenworth was the low bidder, had, we believe, a very favorable bid of $228,814. We expect that they would start work fairly shortly, and I think it's probably like a 45-day or 60-day project, should be in and out fairly quickly.
Any questions? If not, motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the sidewalk improvement project on Leavenworth contract of Cos Construction in the amount of $228,814.45.
Second.
Motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Price.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Thank you, Mike. First consideration ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 11, governing body related to the elections.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I'll start, and Carla, if you can chime in if I miss anything. As you know, the state legislature changed the local elections to fall. The city elected to get ahead of that change, accept the change, make all the changes necessary to the local, our local ordinances. However, we were sort of given a clarification notice from the League of Kansas Municipalities that the City Commission also needs to specifically stipulate whether those elections shall be partisan or nonpartisan. That was part of the state statute that passed whereby the cities would choose. So it's before you tonight on the first consideration ordinance to decide whether you'd like us to move forward with language, making local elections partisan or nonpartisan.
Thank you, Paul. I'm all in favor of nonpartisan.
Nonpartisan, nonpartisan.
Nonpartisan, again.
Nonpartisan.
You have all five. Next is the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to submit the claims for April 9, 2016, through April 22, 2016. This is in the amount of $1,754,056, excuse me, $1,754,056.68. Net amount for payroll number eight, effective April 15, 2016, in the amount of $301,678, I did it again, $301,678.16, including fire and police pension for $11,232.85.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 That's accepted, five to zero. Is there any thing that Commissioners have, Lisa?
No, sir, not tonight.
No, sir?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Paul, nothing. Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Begin voting Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.